We're the saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We didn't get our clock, so we will be doing it time in here. So, um, do we have any here for public?
I got a problem.
Okay.
Let me try to start again.
Is that the old meeting or?
The old meeting.
I can't do that.
Yeah, he just tell them.
If this is the first, we'll give it, we'll give it okay. When he just says we go ahead and continue on from here.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
We don't need to. People tell me to see this. We should have aimed at these tables and we could have all looked at each other.
We still can't.
Because it's not easy.
Sorry, I'll try not to make you a face.
I'm gonna keep looking down there.
It's okay.
Because I'll make a face.
Okay, Mark, I, I, I don't need that.
I can't.
Can you show that for me?
Everyone?
No.
Is everybody in this stuff?
That's okay.
I'm boring you that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I just.
We're technical difficult.
All right.
So you follow.
We're good.
Oh, we're good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone here for public audience?
Oh, yeah. I didn't know.
You did it already.
Gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, and ladies, tonight I would like to just to the office where you solemnly swear that you faithfully discharge according to law your duties to the best of your abilities, so help you God. I am here tonight to protect that person and invite that appears to be under siege by the selectmen rules of procedures. What is political speech is protected by the First Amendment written by David L. Hudson Jr. Political speech refers to expression, discussion, government affairs, or examining candidates for public office and campaign issues. It encompasses almost any government or social issue of public concern. Political speech is a core type of speech the First Amendment was designed to protect. As such, it usually receives strong protection from the courts. The text of the First Amendment reads, "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech." It does not divide speech into different categories, but the U.S. Supreme Court has emphasized that political speech received more protection than other categories such as commercial speech, sexual speech, including obscenity, and some types of indecent speech, purely personal expression, not involving issues of public concern or importance. The court explained this in Bill versus Alabama, 1966. Whatever differences may exist without interpretations of the First Amendment, there is practically universal agreement that a major purpose of that amendment was to protect the free discussion of government affairs. This, of course, includes discussion of candidate, structures, and forms of government, the manner in which governments is operated or should be operated, and all such matters pertaining to public processes. Can, who can engage in political speech? Any person can engage in political speech. It is not confined to politicians, political entity, or what government offers. Everyone has a right, First Amendment right, to utter, write, or display political speech. And political speech touches all my amendment freedoms, often period of press and protest, petition to the government, and even if how we exercise or not our religious beliefs. Is all political speech protected by the First Amendment? Most political speeches protected by the First Amendment, and if the government passes the law to restrict protected political speech, courts will almost always find that law unconstitutional. But not all political speech receives First Amendment protection. If it crosses the line into an unprotected category of speech, it loses that protection. For example, let's say a person is passionate with beliefs that a particular politician is bad for the community. She then writes on line posts and expresses her opinion to the candidate that also directly threatens the politician, a form of speech known as true threat. True threat, but not protected by speech. There is no First Amendment right to threaten any person, even if it reflects someone's sincerity, sincerely held politically. Similarly, let's say a person genetically dislikes a politician. The person then urges other people to harm the politician. This might fall under unprotected speech category known as incitement and imminent gallows action. However, the court has defined the category as being very narrow. It would be easy to label almost any political speech as incitement, particularly if there is a violent or disorderly response to the speech. But to avoid interfering with political speech, courts have made very clear that a particular set of fact is required of speech to be considered incitement. What are some key political cases? Political speech in public officials, New York Times versus Sullivan, 1964. The Supreme Court, I mean, seven of the defamation case was also an important decision on political speech. The case concerned editorial enlightenment published in the New York Times that discussed human rights abuses in Alabama. The court explained that the advertising communicated information, expression, opinion, decided grievance protest, claims of abuses, and sought financial support on behalf of a movement whose existence and objectives are matters of the highest public interest and concern. In other words, the editorial advertisement is political speech and protected by the First Amendment. Furthermore, the court declared in print that there is pro-federal national commitment that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and may include sharp attacks on government officials. This case clearly reflects and affirms the principle that political speech is one of the most protected forms of speech. The bottom line on political speech and the First Amendment, political speech is a core type of speech protected by First Amendment government. First Amendment, governments need a very strong reason to limit or restrict such expression. We all have a right to engage in political speech, and such a right is important to having informed citizenry. All my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pat and Twitter at Joe and Paul.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. On, on, no, okay, that's it for public audience. Um, so a couple of things before we get into other things. Um, first of all, I would like to ask for a motion to table item N. It is the approval of supplemental appropriation for the quarrying water companies because, um, we would like, I would like to come over here to talk about the appropriation and have it on a regular, more of a regular business meeting. Um, so, if there's anybody who.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I, there's nothing for the town administration's office. Don't worry about delay.
Yeah, yeah, I already talked to some things.
Thanks.
Follow those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, I already got passed, so that will be up for December 15th meeting. Send it correct. And then as far as a consent agenda, we just have a couple of general questions. So we're reauthorizing a lot of boards and commissions tonight. One of which I'm going to discuss to not reauthorize. But do, are people comfortable doing that on a consent agenda or do you like to go through each one? Putting that out there. Um, can I, I was just gonna add one more thing. There are some of them that I believe that the board should look at as we get into the term and see if they need to be cleaned up or modified, but I don't think we want to get into each board and commission tonight. Um, so, um, I've already assigned liaisons to all but the Business Development Committee, and so I'm hoping that if you guys agree, we can put that off consent.
So we appoint H, I, J, K, L, M, those we go on consent agenda?
Yeah, does that work for everyone?
It works for me, we do it later, right?
It's the content, but right now we're reupping those committees. Otherwise, we'll go through each one separately, is what I'm asking. Okay? So I'm asking for, oh, you know what, I'm gonna make the motion. I'm gonna make, uh, ask for a motion to reauthor, to put on consent agenda the following items. H, I said, H, I, J, K, L, and M. And.
And then F.
No?
Okay, you're right, sorry.
Sorry. Um, and auction, action O and P. Designate the town manager for December 1st to January 1st. And tax refunds. And also the appointments and resignations taken.
So.
Hi. I'm sorry, this is.
Seven, seven.
Sorry, the, could you restate the letters again and then?
Sure. H, I, J, K, L, and M.
But then you had it.
And O and P.
And then also the appointments and resignations.
A and B.
Okay, got it, thank you.
We're discussing now, okay.
I've had a motion second. Um, the consent agenda is unless we disagree with it, it's approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, oh, yeah, we didn't have it before. It's new, it's new, Mike.
I know, I'm the new kid, sorry.
That's right.
Um, question.
Okay.
For O, designating acting town manager, are we extending, um, Tom Fitzgerald as acting town manager for the period of December 1st through January 1st?
Yes, we kind of want to discuss how we can, but I was, we've kind of already.
I'm just making clarification and, and sorry.
Okay, so is there anybody to, are we ready? Okay, follow those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that passes. Okay. Um, okay. So, first selectment report, I didn't really do one. I have a few things I was gonna say. Um, just reminders to anybody on our board or in the audience. There is a hearing on the path for the referendum on December 10th. I don't know if it's come out yet, Tom, in a calendar invite, but, um, because it'll be on the Board of Finance.
And that isn't the newspaper, um, I told you.
Okay, great. Um, so I will not be here, so I'm hoping that there's good representation there. The other thing on the 10th is the SVAA annual meeting. That's really open to the public and it's, we've made that, our board has made that happen, that they know, um, with their annual meeting. The tribal meeting is on December 16th.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And there also, just as a note, the Conservation Commission will be talking, looking at the McLean peer review that we, we had town manager Mark Yelson authorize, and that's also on the 16th. See, everything's doubled up.
So what was that?
The peer review that's being done for McLean's development is going to conservation. We ordered that, and that's when they have, I think it's a hearing, I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks. So that would be good, I mean, we can't, depends on how the meetings work out that night. Uh, Mark, again, is it coming back on the 5th? It was good to see Mark tonight, coming in, um, who made the effort to see us all get sworn in. Couple of things that we've asked for changes for that are happening is we've asked to have minute line numbers added to our minutes, so it will be easier to reflect on things that are incorrect, and also to make sure we start having page numbers, and Tom F. has taken care of that. Um, one other thing that will be coming on the 15th that I've asked for, um, is update, a project update, timeline update, a website demo on the website that we also authorized that we're all anxiously waiting to see, um, so that we can make sure that it's, it's in good shape to go out to the public. And that is all I have, so I'm gonna turn it over to Tom.
Promise, very quick. Um, so our tax office on November 20th, revenue technician Tina Pimento, successfully completed her certified Connecticut municipal collector exam number one. Uh, this is the first of five steps to become a certified CT tax collector. So we'd like to congratulate Tina on that work. Um, and then I would just like to give a shout out to Franklin Burigo, Kristen, Crystal Luso, Abby Boyer, and Stacy Ponchi for organizing the successful staff pop-up, um, to be put forth and sit. It was very well attended and some great food.
I just, just one quick, is, is, um, Franklin earning the CCMO at the?
I believe so.
Okay, I just wanted to call them out on that because, um, it's a nice little program that you can do through CCN. There are some points and you take some education. But I, I lost my membership because I didn't keep paying. They make you keep paying once you get the, anyway, it stops after a while. So I hope he knows he has to pay $15 a year to, to stay in.
I'll be there tomorrow to see him.
Okay, that's good, yeah, that'd be great, so I'll be there, yeah. Okay, um, any selectmen liaisoning subcommittee reports? We don't need any.
I'll go to the court this time.
Okay. Anybody have anything you want to share?
Of course I do. Hello.
How do I walk that?
You, it's on here, what are you talking about?
It's on your agenda.
It's in your agenda.
I can't find it now. Oh, P, that wasn't passed, okay, keep going.
All right, that's P, that's not mine, I'm not a dear on that.
So, um, my last report for Cultural Parks and Rec. Um, they are having a skate and chair, um, on the 23rd of December, donations to the food pantry. It is, um, 12:30 to 2:30. Um, it's again, free entry, it's Monday, it's halfway school with donations to food pantry, and they are starting acting classes for grades K through eight starting in January. Uh, Simpack, as you mentioned, the public hearing. Uh, Aging and Disability Commission, we have a sensory Santa event for people with disabilities this Sunday, December 7th, from 1 to 4 at the library. Uh, registration is open, you can pick personalized time slots to have a picture and meet with Santa for people with disabilities. It is a free event sponsored by Aging and Disability, the library, and the senior center. Uh, Youth Service Advisory Board, um, they are doing a New Year's Eve intergenerational bingo. Um, but we had a meeting today and, um, I got some interesting information. First of all, holiday giving families, um, have been assigned. There is an increase, they have 45 families currently that they're supporting with 100 kids, which is a little bit more than last year. Um, if people are still interested, you can contact Social Services. Um, they did, uh, assign their last two families this morning, but in case some additional families come in. Um, last month, the food pantry, um, served 103 households from the food pantry, and that was 20 families over the previous month. Uh, so I just wanted to share that information. And then last week for public safety, we are having a meeting on, um, Wednesday, December 10th at 8:00 a.m., and they are doing their annual stuff cruiser event, um, which is December 16th and 17th from 3:00 to 7:00 over at the Tractor Supply Store. And that's it.
Okay. Anybody else? No. Okay, we're gonna move on. Oh, we're gonna move on to selectmen. All right, so our first item is to approve the Board of Selectmen 2026 regular annual calendar. Um, I did want to call out, um, I did ask about, you know, having a work, budget workshop this year that, um, we, we all felt like we would like to do again. And then we will also have our goal setting, um, but it was advised that we do those as special meetings to find out when they're gonna fit in to the next year, and especially the workshop, um, because Mark is planning to do his budget early, so we might wanna work that out. So I just want that noted for people to keep their eyes open, that they would be scheduled as a, um, special meeting. Also, the Board of Finance, um, in April, we only have one meeting, but there's a, but usually participate in the budget hearing that the Board of Finance puts on, and that's scheduled for April 6th, 7th, the first one, something like that. And then the 22nd and the 23rd could be the second one. Um, Tom and I went back and forth on the calendar a bit. Um, we tried to do six and six, which is six, two month meeting, two meeting months. But, um, this is how it worked out because of holidays and, and things like that, vacation schedule. So if everybody's okay with it, gonna ask for motion effective December for 2025 to approve the Board of Selectmen 2026 regular meeting schedule is presented.
So we.
Second. Kevin. Kevin, yep. Okay, um, any discussion? Follow those in favor, say aye.
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 Got our calendar. Okay, now we're gonna talk about, um, the rules of procedure. So, a couple of things, we talked about tweaking in the rules of procedure, um, just to clarify, you know, the public audience portion. And, um, I didn't, you guys have the red, there's a red line version. So I'm gonna, I was gonna just highlight the, kind of the tweaks, and then Kevin has something he'd like to present, um, as a, as a larger change. If we do simple changes tonight, we can pass it tonight. If there's more depth, um, changes that are required, um, we can either form a work group or we can continue to discuss this, you know, over a couple of letters, um, a general item. So, um, what, do you want to, oh, I'm sorry, I'm hurrying, thanks. So the first thing that we took out, because we weren't sure why it was in there, is in the general rules, use of cell phones prohibited in the meeting. Don't really want to listen. For us, basically, because kind of we've been using less times. Um, the second thing we took out was the first elect person shall chair the board's personnel subcommittee. Um, we, you referenced where it is, um, and is it section 402 here? Yeah, where, where is it? Oh, section 402. 411. And so, the only concern I have is if the charter were to change it for some reason, yeah, I guess then it, would it be in anywhere? Would it be, um, a rule of procedure? Or the, is the charter? The personnel chair for the first selectmen?
I don't think the proposal in the charter does, makes any change.
Okay.
And I don't think it, I don't think the charter defines the chairperson as the first one.
It does not?
I don't think so.
Then I wouldn't take it out here.
Yeah, it's more about the habit.
Doesn't.
Okay, let me just make sure.
But even if it's not in the rules of the charter, it takes it that way, they're that controlled, obviously.
Okay, I just don't want to, shall chair, okay, and it's in the charter, so it doesn't really need to be in the rules. Um, so we took that out. The other thing we included that seemed to be missing was in the decorum standards conduct. We included the safe, productive, harassment-free workplace to also include elected officials.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was an oversight, because I actually remember when we did this in the first time around, Kevin made sure that we were covering both elected officials and the public, um, but that just seems like a miss there. And then this was the consolidation of the original seven items. Just asking if people think it still makes sense the way that's written.
Well, what it does, if I remember correctly, is it breaks out the action of the boards versus the actions of the public. So, that's why it was sort of truncated, um, and broken out so that it wasn't, uh, confusing, to be frank. Now it just speaks of republic.
Okay, and my only concern, Tom, was it still covers and says what it said before.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And everybody, I mean, does it seem like it covers that? And we broke out the, um, the rest of that on the bottom. And then the other change was under 162 dash six. Oh, there's a couple of changes. So, one thing that Bob had pointed out to us that in the, I guess in the charters somewhere, it talks about electors being the people who can speak in public audience. And as last time, we had somebody from out of town who gave a false address to the board. And that's not what we're asking for. We're asking people to give their legitimate name and address when they come to speak to the board.
And what you mean by electors of the town is people who may, who are residents of the town?
Well, that's the question, is electors are people who are registered to vote.
Residents registered to vote.
So, one thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, one thing I read in the Bloomfield rules that Franklin sent was residents and taxpayers.
Yeah.
Which is, covers people, and I don't like it just limited to electors.
Right, because if people are not registered to vote, they still have the ability to speak at public audience.
You can always allow them, but the charter is specific. The requirement, it's really a minimum requirement, that there be public audience to allow electors of the town to address the board's election at regular meeting, um, issues, um, I mean, we had it there, uh, Tom, section 402. There's three criteria, one is basically business pending before the town. That's a minimum requirement. In your rules, you can add to that, you can add voters, um, you could add non-residents by permission of the board, which is what we traditionally done. But 402 is very specific about what the requirement is.
Okay.
Just for clarification, just as in part of these discussions, anyone can address the board via written comment. That is a venue for people from out of town, anyone.
Yeah, that's.
It's not.
Should be in here, correct? It was in here.
I don't see it actually moving out anymore.
It was part of that discussion. It does say it somewhere.
Because that was a key, it was a key part of.
Written comp, yeah. It says, any person may address, it's, uh, A162.6. Any person may address the board by written communication in regard to any matter concerning board business for the meeting. The written communication may be submitted by direct mail, email, or addressing communication to the town manager. He'll distribute copies to the board. Written comments will be sent to all board of selectmen members, but not read aloud in meters, meetings, or entered into the record.
Starts on round three.
Okay.
Have a good parallel.
Okay.
So, my, my concern is electors are only people registered to vote. It doesn't take into account a business owner.
Right.
That may have his business in town, pays taxes, or someone under the age of 18, where we just had a, uh, high school soccer team that won the state championship. Maybe they want to come and have us say what a great job they did. And I'm afraid, or concerned, that it'll become kind of clunky if we have to approve everybody who doesn't meet the resident or elector or out of town, or a state senator comes to talk to us. He's not a resident.
Yeah, so, so again, this is just an idea, just to limit what happened. Yeah, I don't like just the electors, right? I like the residents and taxpayers. One other point of discussion was if the state senator or somebody comes to speak to the board, we would have them as a presentation. So they would, we would invite them to speak at a, as a formal presentation. But definitely agree that the electors is too many. Um, what I'd, what I'd like to do, because we're, I think.
Is there a question?
Sure.
If it's in the charter, is that something that charter needs to change then? And we request that it's part of charter review and, and revision, that if there's something in the charter language that is saying public audience is to be electors of the town, is that some language that needs to change in the charter? Or can we supersede that with this?
You can always do more from the charter states, but you can't do less. So right now, the charter says you must allow electors to speak to you.
Okay.
If you want to, if your rules broaden that to residents, voters, however you want, build it really. Then it's in your rules, there don't need for a charter change.
Thank you for that clarification.
We can be more open, but less, cannot be more.
I agree, the intent of the charter is that the people have the right to come to the meeting and talk to us, and that's what it codifies. I think that's very, it sounds like there's some, some consensus that electors may be too restrictive for what we're trying to do, um, even though the intent is understood, uh, disruption to the meetings, um, makes our business difficult, um, to say the least. So I, I, I don't, I don't think that we need to add that there in order to accomplish what we need to get done. Today's taking a long journey.
Okay, so you don't, you don't agree with adding residents and taxpayers?
I, I think that the more of this that we get, the harder, um, you know, the harder it gets. I think that the ideas to publicly schedule a meeting and something that breaks the forum, we have, that's what we're setting up as rules here to determine that, but there could be all sorts of circumstances we can't imagine. And what I would love to do is not to set up, um, a system that potentially chills, um, the opportunity for someone to come here. Um, we all have the chance to, to come here and sit at the diocese, um, and sometimes that makes us, you know, nervous to do our job. The general public is the same way. And there could be someone with a legitimate concern who's unsure whether or not they have the right to come here. And I think that that chilling effect is, um, more dangerous to public discourse than even the ridiculous things that we've experienced over the last five years.
So that, I, the one question that I would ask Kevin is when we get a false, a person who comes with a fake address, who is clearly not an elector of the town and takes advantage of the right to speak, what do we do with that? Because it's, it, especially making up a false address.
I, I don't have a good answer for that, but I, I do know that they're technically not under votes when they come to speak.
Because we talked about actually validating an address, which if we were to go to the charter, we should be checking everybody to speak to make sure they're an elector.
There's some difference. So, so, so they, uh, just when we say the, the address, we know we have, um, certain members that don't believe they need to say the address anymore. And that makes it spread to other, um, residents who don't want to give out their address. So it may be, a non-convention may be stronger to say that you have to say you're, although you can speak.
So, so after the mockery of that meeting, I think we do have to define it where it's not just the general public. This is. This is town business. The situation we're talking about really could not be considered town business. It was nothing on the agenda, it was nothing but hysterics. And that is where we are, and that's why we need to address this. I think the town is made up of people, and those people deserve to talk to their town government. I don't think someone from Wichita, no offense to Wichita, has a right to address our town government when we are trying to get the town's business done. This isn't just a random thing we get together and play pool on Wednesday. I think it should be limited. I agree with the inclusion of all taxpayers and electors. Mike, for the unique situation that there's an eighteen-year-old? We, we can lock that up. I gotta be honest, it hasn't happened in the past two years, but if it did happen, I'm sure we would figure out an accommodation.
I don't ever remember it happening.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can get that, but I think we, we set the basic parameters. And if we need to come up with an exception, I believe in here, it says, at the discretion of the chair, we can add someone, if I'm not mistaken, Bob? Oh, sure. So, I mean, this just sort of gives us a structure that we can say someone is not following the decorum standard. So I think there does have to be some standards, otherwise why have decorum standards, if anything does?
So, so let's skip back to this residency and taxpayers, because that's what's in the Bloomfields.
That's what's in most of them, to be frank. That's painful, the problem where they.
Well, we, we could also say, A, if they're not a resident or a taxpayer, they can give us written comments. Right? Anybody can give us written comments.
Yes.
If it's somebody that we wanna hear from, that is presenting, we can have them as a presentation. The other option we can say is, we can ask them to wait till they speak at the end of the meeting. Right? Because we have that, we, we're allowed to move people to the, well, we're gonna talk about that as another option, but we, if, that's another change that we suggested here, that if the, if the time is extended, the twenty minutes, and there's like twenty people here that are speaking for five minutes, we can, in section, the end of section one sixty-two dash six, we can move the remaining speakers to the end of the meeting.
Which now, just to remind everyone, right now, say there's twenty people that sign up, we have twenty minutes. What our policy, technically, the default policy, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, is we reallocate and everyone gets one minute. So that's the way I read it. Is that true, or am I just making that up?
It's gonna be, but we don't wanna.
We don't wanna do that. I'm just saying.
Yes.
That's what we're, we're fixing, so to say, is if there's a hundred people to talk, that's five hundred minutes.
Right.
You know, you do need to get the town's business done before the end of the meeting. So, what this will enable is a stopgap. And again, we can change it. This is just the basic framework, as I understand it, at least.
I think there'll be some complications that we're trying to change some rules and procedure during the, during the term. So we have a lot of time tonight to set the rules for the biennial. I, I'll just sort of restate what I was saying before. I, I think that setting some guidelines and some rules for both members of this board and the public on how we interact, and setting those guidelines and standards is important. But I also think that every attempt that we make to try to address a specific concern potentially has the unintended negative consequence of activating others. I, I've joked before about this, and I don't wanna add too much levity to it, but we passed an unintentional feeding of wildlife ordinance several years ago. We should consider not, unintentionally feeding trolls who wanna cause a disruption to this meeting. That's what they feed off of. I don't think that that's actually what we're trying to address. What I would like us to consider, and what I try to consider when looking at this, is how do I appropriately set standards so that someone with legitimate business can come before this board and present those concerns to us? And the other mechanisms that we have are still in place. If someone caused a disruption, I do have to comment on some of the other, like, there's cause of disturbance or disruption in the public meeting, there's, there's guidelines for that. So that, that's what I would like us to get to, and not to be overly restrictive or proscriptive in, in the rules, and allow us to just get to setting some standards so we can conduct the business of the town.
So, just in response to that, say ten people show up from out of town. That's an hour. Just for people that don't even live here. That's why I think, and they can address us by written comment, we're not saying don't talk to us. We're saying the actual conduct of the town's business should not be interrupted by something that's not pertinent, to be frank, to the agenda, or specifics from the town's person should always have the right to come to us.
For instance, had that church come to us about a tax issue that they had. That just being a parishioner, there may not give them agency as a taxpayer. In that circumstance, they absolutely have legitimate business before the town to talk about their circumstances. They may not be a voter or a resident of the town, but they may be a parishioner, and they have the right to be heard.
But they're a nonprofit. Is there some?
Yeah, it'd have to be property owners.
Is it, um, you know, I just, just for your laughter. The audience, um, the property owners?
Well, because there's nonprofits, and there is not a mechanism because they don't pay the tax, and they're not registered electors. But I think that encompasses something that would be an oversight, as I see it.
That's why I'm concerned about overly encumbering our rules. And I'll, and empowering the person with the ability to run an efficient and, and focused meeting.
I, 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 I'm actually, I tend to agree with Kevin, as I would prefer not to overbe.
Overbe.
Not to that, Kevin, I'm agreeing with you.
Wait, is it de minimis?
Yeah. I would rather look at mechanisms for keeping order within the meeting, and when there's a true public disturbance, as we witnessed in our last meeting. I, 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 you know, I would rather have the ability to quell a true public disturbance than try, than, than even have the appearance of us having limiting, uh, the ability for people to come and speak at public audience. I hear what your concerns are, and I do think they're valid, especially in light of what we witnessed. But in the two years that we've been here, and in previous words, I, I, I don't think that we've seen a pattern of that. We hope that that does not now tend to occur. But, you know, there's a lot of examples here of why people would be limited who have legitimate business in this town if we start putting parameters around the ability to come and speak.
Okay, so, it doesn't sound like we'll get to consent us on that, is what I'm hearing.
And, and I have one other comment.
Sure.
If we go back to the second page, A one sixty-two dash four.
Yep.
We talk about, the board supports the right of a resident, we should just change that to speaker. Because then we define below who can speak at the meeting.
Well, that's, that's always been there, I feel like. It's really saying that residents have a right to criticize their government. So if you say speaker, why is somebody from Canton coming to criticize our government? They don't live, they're not our constituents, right?
But they could be as a non-resident business owner, taxpayer.
I'm not for changing it to resident or taxpayer. You know, I mean, that includes them, but I see what Wendy says, uh, about, why would they be criticizing our government? Not to say it, this is local government. If you were state or further up, you know, it'd be more inclusive. But we're talking about some serious government.
I think, so, and I agree with Mike on making sure the language is consistent. I read that statement as allowing us to interpret intent. So our intent here is that there's a right to redress grievances and all that, is that's why that's written there. And I don't think that it overly complicates the detail and the rest, if, if, if we're comfortable with that language being there. As long as we define that somebody can come to the meeting and speak before the board, I'm okay with that.
So I'm, I'm not inclined to, are you saying, could you be happy leaving a resident? Because I don't really wanna change that to speaker.
With all respect to Mike, yes, I, I think I'd rather.
Yeah, I just feel like it's been, this has been part of this for a long time. And it is residents who should be able to criticize their.
Okay, then, if, if we're gonna leave that as resident, which I understand the logic there, then when we get to the, the third page, then I think it should be resident or taxpayer.
Instead of the pub, okay?
Or property owner, whichever way you wanna go.
Okay. But, so Kevin's not like that, and so, yeah, it's not gonna work, so we're gonna have to figure that out.
Wendy, in that same section, one sixty-two point four, I just wanna point of clarification. When it says elected officials shall not communicate by any form of electronic communication during the meeting, is communication like if I go to look up a law, is that like, I'm using an electronic machine to communicate? You know, I don't know if that, I don't think breaking the laws, you know?
I, I don't know what that means. I think it means I shouldn't be sitting here texting Steve stuff about you or somebody else. That's how I check that.
I think previously, our language involves communication among members during deliberations, you know, which could be a concern if we're debating something. Public has a right to know what we're thinking, and if we're talking amongst ourselves, and that's, you know, that's not open and, and fair. I think that we can all sort of understand and agree that every once in a while, I'll find out that my daughter got home from hockey, and I'm not trying to break the rules, if I gotta text her this extremely.
Right, and like, like, to Curtis' point, I looked up, I'm like, okay, Parks and Rec, what's happening, you know, or, like, somebody. There was another time that we were looking up something that had not been, we weren't communicating, but we have, oh, where was that on this, you know, and I'm, I'm clearly on my laptop, you know, looking at the agenda and other forms of business that have to do with the town, so.
So we all.
That, that's nice, yeah, I think it's a good point, I agree with that.
Well, I was gonna try to clear, get some, up consensus on a couple things, so we don't go back to them. So, can we go back to the beginning?
Right.
A one sixty-two, one dash one, are we okay taking out use of cellular telephones is prohibited in the meeting?
That's objectionable.
Okay, so, ever, consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Um, but taking out the personnel subcommittee, because it's in the, we're saying that it's in the charter, consensus?
Yes.
I'm still gonna be the personnel subcommittee, I'm sure. Okay, the decorum standards, the top, I don't see any red lines, are we okay with the re description?
Well, we have elected officials.
Okay, well, that's, I missed that part. Oh, ele- elected officials, consensus there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, wait, okay. Um, the following, that, are we okay that these standards of conduct for elected and appoint in public cover what we intended prior to the change?
I agree with Kevin, or was it Curtis, about removing, so the red lines are now in the blue. That's what happened there, is we broke out the elected officials versus the public. And we just carried it from number two up. I don't think we need, we shall not communicate by electronic communication. If you want, elected officials shall not communicate by themselves, or however you would say it.
Well, I see it happens sometimes.
No, but I, I think we should get rid of that money. We just brought it up because we were taking from down low and bringing it up.
I'm okay with taking that out, because I don't think we've ever do that.
Well, that's why, what I had mentioned before, is in that line that has been deleted, it says, we should communicate between or amongst themselves. And the reason why that provision was in there is because of open meeting requires us to communicate during a meeting in public, and we can't talk without disclosing what we're saying to the public during a meeting. So, so I, I'm okay with removing it, because it's already covered in law outside of the rules of procedure.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. So we're gonna take out that elected officials shall not communicate during the meeting, consensus?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and the other piece, and then we have the breach, the breach of the standards of conduct, we did not change that.
I do have one, one point, sorry, that in the portion where it talks about the members of the public, the part about threatens to disrupt is included in the previous language, and I just found that to be funky. If we're comfortable with making changes today, I think that if somebody is disrupting a meeting, that's quite a different level of response than threatening to disrupt. And I, knowing that I'm reading this now, and I have an opportunity to make that edit, I would rather remove threatens to disrupt, because I don't know what that looks like. I mean, you know what disruption looks like.
Can we say, what, can we say refrain from behavior that disrupts or is threatening?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would say that changes that language is, it does threaten to disrupt the same as attempting to disrupt. Maybe that's a distinction without a difference. But I, I don't know, but I'm okay with leaving it in, I'm just unclear what threatens to disrupt means.
Okay, but, would, what about just saying, or is threatening?
How about, or just, or threats, and get rid of the two words, to disrupt?
Well, I agree.
Which part it says?
Following standards of conduct.
Is it in the coloring?
Oh, right there.
I, I'm on the paper, sorry.
I, I scrolled down to the part. Remembered the license.
No, but I know what it is, because, because I can tell. So refrain from behavior that disrupts. Well, threatens to disrupt is potentially something like.
No, that's, I think threats to disrupt is kind of ambiguous.
Okay.
I'm trying to remove those words.
Okay.
Or words, or friends to disrupt? Yeah, I, I think the, the.
Yeah.
Are all, um, there's a series of cases we talked about under the First Amendment, how much rules of procedure and, and cut off, kind of. And I think threatens to disrupt is too broad. It has to be actual destruction. Something like, maybe so much nobody's at work, continue its work, or things like that, has to be more than just a threat. It has to be actual destruction.
Okay.
They can bring a bicycle or more, and they just can't, okay.
So, is there, so is there anything in here? Well, then it's in there twice, so we have to change it later, because it says it later.
All of these, all of these rules are guidelines, and each incidence of disruption has to be taken on its own facts, if that makes sense. A very factual intensive, there, there can't be any broad, uh, curtailment of ready to speak. There has to be as objective guidelines as you can put together, and then the conduct which causes the curtailment of speech has to be, and it's not only the rules, but also the cases. So I think disruption is.
Good enough?
Right, I agree.
Okay, so we're saying refrain from behavior that's disruptive.
The, the, the rule is no priority restraint. For instance, we can't, you can't, that's been a rule, you can't talk about breaks in order meetings, that would be a prior constraint.
Right, okay. So that disrupts government operations. No person attending a meeting shall engage in disorderly conduct, again, it's at the end, we have to take that out. That disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting.
Correct, that's a letter.
Twice.
I think that's a good change.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which one is that? That's right.
All right, so consensus on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Who defines disruptive? We do, I guess.
Well, you do.
I know, I think, okay.
I would, I would presume hypothetically, were this to happen, there would be a motion and a second, that someone's being disruptive, if they don't stop. They're gonna be.
We've done point of order, and it doesn't necessarily work, as we probably have had in your past.
A motion and a second
Okay.
is a stronger statement than a point of order.
A motion, a, a motion and a second to have them, you feel, okay?
You need to stop what you're doing, or you'll be asked to leave.
Okay, okay, good suggestion.
Unless counsel tells me.
No, I think a motion and a second to adjourn.
To recess, is what we tried the first time.
It is a structural procedural. And then asking the person to discontinue the disruption. And then we can be, after the disruption has ended, but with how curtailing the ability of the speaker to grant his or her conduct back in line with your rules. If they refuse to do so, that's when you can take, you know, it's, it's progressive.
So after the, uh, so I wanna clarify, if we have a disruption, and we have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Recession.
To recess, sorry, to not adjourn, to recess, we take a recess, we come back, that speaker then has the ability to continue speaking as long as they are not continuing the disruption?
Well, that'll be up to you at the time. Again, it's all fact based. It's, there's no way, I don't think, to write a rule that would, in all cases, pass muster of the Supreme Court cases that sort of set the limits of public participation.
Yeah, so, for example, our singer from last time.
Yeah, I, I would start with that.
I don't think we would allow him to come back and continue.
I think that's right, especially given, that singer didn't have the status of resident, taxpayer, whatever.
Nothing.
It was just someone here, came here, that, and then the charter also says, you know, they can address you for basically town business, not to make a good YouTube video. And you don't have to allow your meeting to become a forum for a good YouTube video.
Um, plus he was a terrible singer.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I will say this to people in the room, that the prior boards, prior board, had, at one point, tried to recommend moving everyone to the end of the meeting unless it was specific to the agenda. And we did not, just, we did not wanna do that, because we did not wanna limit people's speech. And that was an option, and many communities do that. So, we are allowing people to speak upfront at the meeting. And that was an option and many communities do that, so we are allowing people to speak upfront at the meeting. Um, so I'm just, I just wanted to point that out here.
I might also add, it's okay, we we allow five minutes, the norm is three minutes in most other communities.
Agreed. It is, um, so, okay, so so in this page, we have the consensus of the two things that we changed for whatever number, Tom's keeping track. Okay, now I'm gonna flip over to the next page. We, nothing right now in the board agenda, right?
Yeah.
Public audience, this is where we're getting into the electors discussion, we're back at that discussion, right? Um, and I I do agree, I I I just feel that it should be residents and taxpayers, people that have a vested interest in the community, I mean, you know, why do we want to hear from, again, somebody from Avon who, I don't know, has a problem down on Hock Meadow Street, that's a state, I I don't, that's not a good example.
I I confer for what that's worth. I think electors is too restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it is what's in the charter in all fairness, but as Bob, uh, not just alluded to, said, we can open it up to more. I think residents and taxpayers opens that up substantially. I acknowledge that Mike said, you know, we're gonna have the nuance here and there.
Okay.
I think we do that on the one.
Well, if you have and with the word and, you know, you know, they, you could say residents and or taxpayers, you can change it. You know, just putting that extra word in there would allow for somebody who may not be paying taxes because they're underage, but is a resident of the town, or they're a resident, or, you know, they're a taxpayer, but they're not a resident, so.
That's no or, no and. And implies you have to have both.
Well, you have and or, like.
You don't need the and or, and implies you need both.
You don't need and, you just. Yeah, you're.
Just a or.
Correct.
I have an idea. Well, I don't know, 'cause maybe this will make Kevin happy. Could we just.
It's that bad?
Come on, no, no.
Like, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see Kevin's position here. What if, could we just say, um, to, um, one period, whatever, it's members of the public, members of the Simsbury public?
Which is resident.
Well, it covers.
A resident doesn't have to be eighteen.
Taxpayers.
I actually think that's a nice balance because it gives the ability for you, um, in managing the meeting, to determine who's an appropriate speaker by adding that they're a Simsbury, a member of the Simsbury public. I I don't disagree with that.
Okay, if Kevin agrees, I'm gonna.
Well, I took, what do you think?
I think members of the public is is very broad and there's no objective definition of it. It's completely subjective, but I think what you're getting at is adds, is captured as well with residents not taxpayers, because we know what a resident is, is somebody who lives here. We know what a taxpayer is, somebody who pays taxes. And for the situation where the neither a resident nor a taxpayer, you always have the ability by consent of the board to allow them to speak. And you've seen this before, where they come in, they may have a project in town that they want to get support for or a grant in another town. It's a two town grant and you want to get the support, so someone from another town will come and say, this is a great grant, you know. Um, there's always the ability to do that.
So my concern, uh, it continues to be, um, that, uh, the haters will always hate. And they will come here and try to disrupt. And there will be people that, I'm gonna disagree with, we'll still talk in public comment, there'll be people that we agree with and come to public comment. What I worry about is the ability for someone with legitimate business, uh, who feels like they're not allowed to just speak in their local government. So the more restrictive language we put, somebody who doesn't pay taxes, who does their own public assistance, are they permitted to attend this meeting? They, maybe they are a resident, they're not a resident yet, I don't know the circumstances. I do like, uh, where Wendy went with the members of the Simsbury public because I think that it clarifies further, it's no different than the previous language we had, except that it clarifies that we intend to hear from members who live here in Simsbury. And I don't think that we're also checking IDs at the door. When we have a caucus, as many of us have participated in, we check IDs just like it's voting day. If this were actually town meeting day back in the day, when everybody would have come and there would have been, you know, town meeting and voting from the floor and all that, we would have checked IDs at the door. This is a different, um, you know, form of that as a representative town meeting and a board of selectmen here, that we have an opportunity to hear from the public. Even though it's uncomfortable, it's only five minutes per per pop and I'd rather have the opportunity to hear from them and control the circumstances when they're out of control.
I I like, I like the Simsbury public.
I'll, yeah, I don't, I I'm with Bob, I don't think it's a definable, uh, term.
Yeah, but it's not, but it's, it's, it's not definable, but it's, it's combined by saying, and we.
Well, if you go to town.
And if you visit somewhere, you're a, a member of the.
That's where I'm going, so that opens it up now.
I don't, I don't think so. Alright, I, I, alright, well, I'll, I'll come back, yeah.
I do, because if you're here in Simsbury that day, well, is there any consensus for resident or taxpayer, 'cause Mike, were you on on that or not? It's okay, whichever, I just don't remember.
No, I I still remember.
I don't.
I I think everybody, it, it's a softer way when you say Simsbury public, but it's not well defined. I agree with that, which is, and maybe what we do is say members of the Sims, who are Simsbury residents or taxpayers.
See, that's how we started. I'm with Mike, I'm with Mike, anyone else?
Well, that's where we started, and I think Kevin's the only one that doesn't.
I I think the Simsbury public's too big, because if you're visiting for the day,
You're in the Simsbury.
And if you're in Simsbury, you are part of the Simsbury public.
I'm not agreeing, but it's okay.
Well, how do we define it? We have to get some consensus going forward, so I'm well, I'm ready to hear a third.
Well.
Oh, I, I don't.
We like the residents and taxpayers.
Yeah, so that's a good example.
Like residents or taxpayers.
Residents or taxpayers, alright.
That's true, that's a consensus, if you guys are in fact, uh.
Unless Bob, you have some other way around this that is a better.
We just got a consensus.
Well, like I said, that is used in a lot of the other towns, right, um, that wording, or let's keep going.
The one thing, on on that same line down there, it says each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Um, should be no more than five minutes, because if we have hundred people here, one hundred and fifty hundred five minutes.
Well, here's, then read the next paragraph, so this is where we were talking about making a change.
Yeah. So technically.
Can I excuse me stuff?
Sorry, I can converse during the meeting anyways.
You can't text them without, so they.
Are we gonna have to separate YouTube?
I know, that's, I'm just kidding, right?
I'm just saying together.
I might have to make a change here.
Kids.
Okay, when the chair changes the order of the speaker list and allows, what, the chair?
Oh, the chair may change the order of the speaker list and allow additional speaking time.
Um, there's, so where does the words, the little part about the five, do we need?
It says when the chair, there's those number of speakers who wish to speak in public audience, which would exhaust the reasonable length of time allowed, the chair may set a short period of time for a speaker.
Okay, I have a, okay, okay. Right, so that's what, that's what Steve was saying before, if there's twenty people here
Or more than ten.
and we want to get them in at the beginning of the meeting, we can limit their s, their time to fit the twenty minutes. What we've added here, which is another suggestion that we need to vote on, is may set a shorter period for each speaker. Or basically they can do the five minutes, but we're going to move the remaining speakers to the end of the meeting. So if there's ten people here who want to talk for five minutes and we've exhausted the time and we need to move on to business, we can move them to the end of the meeting. Uh, I don't know what people think about that. 'Cause that's a hard, that's, that would be a hard thing to do.
I think, I think it chills, uh, if you had, it would be, it would be a bias of this board as reasonable people
Yeah, I.
to put the speakers that we potentially disagree with.
At the end of the meeting.
The most important end of the meeting. I think we have to, um, obviously manage through that and understand that that's the reality of of, um, of a sort of public facing board like this. But I I don't recall that charter only requires us to do this at one of the two meetings per month, right? So we have an opportunity, maybe to not do that at another meeting, or if we don't get business done, we can call a special meeting. So there's still way for us to get meeting, uh, the work of the board done. Um, if a public comment is so, uh, so active that we, that we couldn't be done during a regular meeting.
Any, what, can I just say one thing though? Any person who does not sign in may not be permitted to speak until all those who've signed in have given their testimony. So to me, that would mean if ten people has signed in, the people that are at the bottom of the list or who did not sign in, in would be the people that we could move to the end of the meeting, because they, as this says, I don't even have to allow them to speak if they don't sign in.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do Kevin go to the bathroom? I'm. No, I'm just kidding. Um, isn't there like a time we have to be done with the meeting, am I?
Ten thirty.
So, that would actually be the reason for this is if there were so many speakers that we were not able to get the timely business of the town done. You know, some of the things we authorize, 'cause it's going to board finance, or it's going here and there. And I think we do need a mechanism to get the town business done. Um, I don't know what it is, I'm not saying I'm for.
Can I, can I add this caveat here, just to make it more, whatever, governmental? Um, can we leave that in? The chair may set a shorter period for each speaker or move the remaining speakers to the end of the meeting with the board's consent? So that means that it's not a bias of one person, it would be the board making that decision as a body?
So one of the reasons why people come to the meeting to speak is, is often an item on our agenda that we might be voting on. So we, we don't get the opportunity to hear comment from someone who has legitimate business on an action item that we may have at the board.
Sure.
So that's the, that's a negative consequence. Um, it it can feel like sometimes we're hearing things that we may have already considered, but I do look forward to sometimes hearing things in public comment, often hearing things in public comment, that I wouldn't have otherwise considered and have not heard from the other book.
That's a good reason, okay, but then again, that, that goes back to the reason of of which we didn't do is having agenda items specific to the agenda of, and everybody else who's just here to, whatever, speak at the end of the meeting. The reason we also decide, decided not, that we didn't want to revisit that was because people can say that the agenda item is part of their five minutes, but it may not be till the last minute, and then we can't really, we don't know that. So, alright, I'm willing to just scratch that for now.
And just to clarify, Steve.
Just like.
Yeah.
It's actually not a hard and set rule that we have to be done by ten thirty, it is our objective to be done by ten thirty. There may be times, I just, once.
But what I'm saying is, the the option that's left is if there's so many speakers and the chair decides to set a shorter period for the speaker, everybody's gonna get a minute.
Yeah.
Right, and then nobody's gonna be able to do their five minutes at the end of the meeting, but that's not.
No, but they're gonna tell us their headline, to Kevin's point.
Okay.
I think it's more important, even if you have to do it in twenty words or less, to tell us before we.
Oh, oh, exactly.
Pretty much, and make it a headline.
Okay.
So I think to scratch the addition of.
We did.
Okay, thank you.
Consensus, scratched. And then, um, there was another place where, where's the other place that they had the.
Yeah, one, some places.
Uh, no place, it's just.
I thought it was in two places.
Nope.
Hold on, I'm gonna share, I'm trusting, um. Okay, I guess I was.
He's without trust, though.
No, I thought it was in two places.
No, it's just the expiration of the notice.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, so let's, did, so we have consensus on everything and we have five to one consensus on the residents and taxpayers. So that would be a cause, or, okay.
Yes, there is a or. You're right.
Okay, so, um, now I wanna turn, that, I think that was all the minor changes, tweaks.
Well, there is one.
Where's that one?
We added the words or as amended, so we do have the opportunity to revisit this, shouldn't be.
Okay, oh, yes, great.
So, I mean, I'm all for that, because I think it's, it's important.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, that's a very good cast. Consensus?
Yes, for me.
Yep, yes.
Yeah.
Ca- Kevin?
No, I, I don't like it, but I'm willing to move forward on the, on those implications.
Okay.
Alright, so.
Okay, okay, so Kevin has to like to bring, um, a topic for discussion for the rules of procedure.
Right, send some stuff out about it if anybody doesn't have the language that I have.
I'm looking at on my phone right now, just letting you know.
So, um, the reason why I think this, um,
Why?
this could be important is for us to, um, alleviate any of the concerns that that could be about a meeting before the meeting. So my, um, recommendation is, um, that if there's a, a circumstance where there's a, what my language says, a planned meeting of three or more members, um, this wouldn't encompass something, for instance, like the personnel subcommittee, which is three members, uh, because it's already, um, uh, warned or noticed and minutes are already published, um, about it. But it, uh, it also doesn't cover things of a social nature or anything, like the Chamber of Commerce inviting us to, uh, something or the Taste of Simsbury or those kinds of other events where, uh, we may find ourselves together. But if we're gonna discuss, um, among a group that could have the ability to, um, uh, to change business either by, um, you know, voting no on a motion or, um, uh, doing other, uh, activities that, uh, the public at least has a chance to know, um, a few things. One, that a meeting happened, uh, what day it was, um, who attended, uh, that meeting, and if there was, um, uh, any, um, uh, consensus on an action. But I wouldn't be asking here, nor would I think would be appropriate for full minutes to be published, or anybody who was for or against, um, you know, something during that meeting, I think it would be helpful, um, from a, sort of a sunshine and full disclosure perspective. But there is, as, um, you know, Bob has, um, uh, shared with, with many of us, the ability for a caucus uh, to be held, um, among members, and that's absolutely something that's, um, a right, and it's also, um, protected, and that's why, you know, minutes wouldn't be required to be published. But just like we also talked about at the top of the meeting, charter, for instance, gives us, um, the minimum and then we can expand on that. And so FOIA and, uh, open meeting law require certain things about, um, holding a public meeting, but we can do something in addition. So that's why it's my recommendation with this board, um, that if we do have a group of us that, um, that needs that we say that the meeting happened, again, who was there, um, and, um, no other full minutes would need to be disclosed, and so I have a recommended language here. I think it could be added to the section, um, uh, one, six, two, uh, two, which, uh, covers, um, the meeting types. That would be a special meeting type, potentially under that list, or could be added under one, six, two, ten, because I'm really talking about publishing, um, you know, something like a, a minutes type, um, uh, notice. Uh, so that's my, uh, request from you. Um, I do add some language in here that I think protects the ability for, uh, members to hold, uh, you know, a caucus or another meeting, um, uh, without having to have the details of that caucus, um, you know, uh, or the protections provided in FOIA laws.
But FOIA is clear that the meeting does not include a caucus members of a single political party, notwithstanding that such members also constitute a quorum of a public agency. So it's clear by FOIA laws that that's not constituted a meeting.
Yeah.
That's correct, and that's why I called that out specifically in, in, uh, the language that I have given to you. Um, I call that language out because I think that it's important that, uh, this is something additional that, uh, we as a board will agree to do, uh, because we think that it's helpful for public disclosure, not because it's, uh, required otherwise in law.
Well, so, so let me weigh in, so originally, I I I was, thought you were limiting the ability to caucus, first of all. That if I met with Diana and Curtis, that I would have to, and we happened to talk about the PAC or something like that,
Mm-hmm.
that I would have to include in the next minutes that I met with two other members of my board and we talked about something in town. I, I, that is not, that is a right to me in FOIA, that is a, a right by, by members of a party to caucus that I feel I would not give up. Because, uh, it, just, we just happen to have the majority, but the ship could be on the other foot, you're giving up.
Absolutely, and we're all the same.
But, but you are, but not future people, you're giving up something that FOIA, w- why would I limit what FOIA is offering? And, and that, that's my biggest question on this whole thing. FOIA is specific, it allows John to speak here, it allows people to come in here and 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 say what they want in different sections of the FOIA rules. It gives specific rules for when we are a meeting, when we're not a meeting. Why would we want to limit the only ability that we have that's in FOIA? That, I I just don't understand it, other than transparency. And I feel that, to your point, if there's a meeting of three of us, where we're gonna discuss, you know, I would, I would assume maybe the person would ask to bring the full board together, like, for a special meeting or something like that. Um, so I, I don't, I am affirm now to, to limit our ability to do what we're allowed to do based on FOIA. But I, I will say that I'm, I'm not, yeah, I mean, I don't, you guys can discuss it, but, um, that's a, that's a major change that I do not want any other towns to, um, and I, not that I have to mirror every other town, but I could find it. Uh, I, does the state legislature, do they limit people meeting, you know, within their party?
Yeah, but why does it like the state legislature?
Oh, oh, it does.
And it may, and it shot that one, that's.
Yeah.
Well, we could.
How come three, not two?
Yeah, I, I'm willing to, okay, and one of the reasons is, is because, um, two people is not, it does not cycle up. Uh, three people, um, from any group of us can. Uh, three people, um, from any group of us can, uh, vote no as a block.
I understand that, but to me, it seems, it's like you're choosing a number that, um, wouldn't affect you.
So if, uh, so you're okay with this, if we include it as any two members that gets together to discuss business?
Uh, no, I'm just asking why, two, three, or four?
The reason is because sometimes you and I might have a telephone call that we might discuss about an issue. Um, um, but that's not a majority or even enough, uh, to do anything necessarily on the board. And I, I think that sometimes you're gonna have a conversation, um, among two people and it's not the same as three or more. Um, like I said, I think there's, um, there's a good reason for this. I think that there's, um, the ability, like what he said, and transparency, that's helpful. And I do think that you should be able to speak freely in the caucus. That's why, uh, it would not be appropriate for us to ask for minutes of a caucus to be published.
But you're asking me to report a caucus. Why would I report a caucus when it's a, it's a Freedom of Information Act
Protected.
Capability of, of a party? And I, why, that's all I'm asking. I, I don't wanna have to report, and I'm not hiding anything. It is a by right of, of a party, which is weird, you know, you win the majority or whatever, you have that right. It's a, it, it's spelled out. If it wasn't something that should happen, why would it even be in FOIA? So, so I can't get my head around that, Kevin, to, to think that I would want to report that, uh, as anything.
That's.
Uh, no one's ever complained except for one person in, in all my time on this board, that people are secretly meeting, which is a God-given right, um, from FOIA.
I do.
Well, that, that is.
Is there any other application of this other than a caucus? It is just to get down black and white? Has this ever occurred where it's applicable?
Sure, sure, absolutely. There, 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 there can be three members of a board that would gather uh, and decide to work together, um, as a subset of the board, absolutely. I just think that it's appropriate that if we're gonna do that.
I thought we weren't allowed to do that already.
If it was town, if it was agenda items.
Well, a, a caucus is limited to discussing the political effect of the perspective, well, that's the definition of caucus.
Yeah, but I thought three of us meeting was already, or maybe it's four. Actually, I think it's four.
Or quorum. Four is a quorum.
If it's four of the same vehicle party, you get the point definition of caucus.
Right, no, I get that. I'm just trying to find the applicability of this.
But it's, it's a quorum. Right, if, if three is a quorum, so if, if Kevin, Mike and I have, four is a quorum.
There's, four is a quorum.
That's correct. That's why I missed that.
And I can't see, as long as this applies to a board meeting, only this board, because this is the only board I'm concerned about. But we can't have three of our board members meeting with members of another board. That would be a different issue.
Well, that is a difference. I can't caucus, I can't have four of us meet with four members of the board at the same party.
No, it, it, it would be three. Because then those three would have the political power to do something. And meeting with member of another board, I'll, I'll say, on the surface, it could be viewed inappropriate.
Well, there are rules specifically that say who can meet across, because I took it in the FOIA class I took, who can meet.
Yeah, there are F O I decisions that say that even less than, in Georgia, you can meet with another body and delegates to, to, uh, say.
Yeah, so when that's not, we're, we're talking here of just our board basically saying if three of us meet within a party, we have to report that we met. With, we don't need minutes, but we have to tell people we met and what time we met.
And who's there.
And who's there. And I, again, as a caucus, I, I, you know, I'm a hard no. Um, I still also think the three people across different parties, it's not precluded from FOIA. So why would we preclude it for ourselves? We're, we're just adding more, more constraints to us, more reporting requirements that we're going to have to follow per law. Which points and polies us reporting on those things. I, I just think, I just don't think it's appropriate. Again, Kevin, I respect the, the conversation and the, and the attempt to, to bring that forward, but I don't feel that it's ever been an issue. I think that's what problem is. If, if it's allowed to happen, in that sense, then it's allowed to happen. I don't know. I don't know what other people think about that.
So from my perspective, I think that it's something that, um, only helps and I don't see how it hurts. Um, especially considering that it protects the ability for, um, those members to have a discussion, if it's, uh, already protected in FOIA. Um, so if you'd like, I, I'd like to make a motion on my proposed language to add it to section one six two ten.
To add what language? All the language?
I can, I can read it if you like. It's, uh, so the proposed language to add to section one six two ten of the, uh, rules of procedure, in the event of a planned meeting of three or more members of the Board of Selectmen organized for the purposes of discussing business which has been scheduled to be or may be reasonably under consideration for action by the Board of Selectmen in the current term. A disclosure of said meeting within a reasonable timeframe shall be published and made available in areas where minutes of the Board of Selectmen are made and available to the public. The disclosure of such meetings after the fact shall include the time, uh, time, place, names of attendees, discussion topic or topics, and any consensus reached without any requirement to disclose individuals in favor or against, nor will there be a requirement to publish full minutes of meetings. Attendance by members of the Board of Selectmen at a public meeting where a record or minutes are made and published will satisfy those requirement and no additional records shall be needed. Not subject to this disclosure are any meetings of a Personnel Search Committee for Executive Level Employment Candidates, any chance meeting or a social meeting neither planned nor intended for the purpose of discussing matters related to official business, strategy, union negotiations with respect to collective bargaining, and importance of Connecticut General Statutes one zero, two zero zero.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, is there any discussion? Um, I, I will have, my discussion is that, um, this eliminates any ability to caucus. And I don't see the value in it. Um, so, if there's a need for a meeting, then we call a meeting.
I ask, it, it also since it's so broad in, organized for the purpose of discussing, this interest has been scheduled to be or may reasonably be under consideration. It's basically like, all right, well, it may be under consideration at some point. Any idea that I wanna bring up, we're just basically not allowed to discuss. Like, it's, it's so broad and it's basically limiting, um, any, any discussion we may have whatsoever as a caucus that is protected under, uh, FOIA laws.
I'm always open to friendly amendments.
Well, I'm not making any friendly amendments. The other thing that I will say is, who is going to enforce the reporting?
It's just a rule of procedure that we agreed to as members of the board and I don't think that there's any enforcement mechanism required or even helpful in this case.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Do I have to call a vote? All those in favor of Kevin's amendment, say aye.
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 Um, all of those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you for the consideration.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, so are we done with the rules of procedure, um, with the changes that we made in the consensus on, okay?
Yes.
I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve the rules of procedure as discussed in the consensus, um, but bullets, um, as it's named?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, that was good. That was a good discussion. All right, let's get back to the table here. What's next? Oh, my favorite, this is my favorite, I've been waiting for this one. I'm sorry, guys, I, I gotta have some fun with this job, okay? So.
Are we ready for the rest of the meeting?
No, I hope not.
Probably not.
No, we don't.
Does he wanna be here for the appointment?
You can, you. Oh, for the, um, discussion on the, the adjournments?
It's up to you. I don't have any questions. He's filling us with his time in the meeting.
Yeah, come on, come on, thanks, Bob.
What's that in football, is that?
All right, wow.
I could look up again, not a lot.
No, you're just not allowed to text me that.
I'll actually score.
I will look up.
Just, just kidding.
Thanks, Bob.
I don't know. Okay, so, uh, avoiding the first Deputy First Electman is, it's one of the pleasures that the First Electman has. I, I do, well, you've all read it, but I'm gonna read it, okay? Just for fun. First Electman Wendy McStudis has asked Deputy First Electman Stephen Antonio to continue serving this role. And Deputy First Electman Antonio has accepted the appointment with excitement and glee. He loves having First Electman Wendy McStudis as his supervisor. Just sorry, I just had to write that in here. Mr. Antonio has lived in Simsbury his entire life, is a local businessman and real estate investor. He graduated from Simsbury High School in nineteen eighty-one and earned a bachelor's degree from Bryant University in nineteen eighty-five. Mr. Antonio returned to Simsbury, took over his family's restaurant, Antonio's Restaurant, and the rest is history. Sorry, but those are all the things that we have left, just so you know. He has served on many boards and commissions over the years, actively advocating for the residents and business community in our town. This includes being elected to the zoning Board of Appeals and Designer Board. He served as chairman for both for Men and Ers. Mr. Antonio was also a member of the Fair Housing Commission, the Building and Board of Appeals, and a board member of Simsbury Main Street Partnership. Stephen lives in Simsbury with his wife Lisa, while their three children, Catherine and Thomas and John, are all attending college. This makes them empty nesters, except for Fiona and Hazel, their two loyal dogs, along with their eleven sheep, two fewer than in twenty twenty-three. They are still working to get rid of the mice that have taken up residence in their park, and maybe it's time to add some cats into the system.
This is really fact-based. Nice talk, except the cats.
Yeah, but I think that's a good idea. Okay, so I don't need to vote on that one.
Wait, so he's a resident or taxpayer?
Both. I'm an in, I'm happy to be an in.
I'd, I'd like to further move this, I'd like to further move this up here in the cover of the Mexican Antonio's menu.
Yes!
And that he'd be required to wear the stash during official business.
I accept that on the amendment.
So, okay, and now we're moving on to, oh, we're getting somewhere, the appointments, boards and committees. Um, do you guys want me to read it or not? Well, I'll read it. Do you want me, do you wanna hear your names and what you're doing? So the power of notes, I'll do that. Okay, so this is, um, this is one of the other, other pleasures of being the First Electman, you get to select the liaison appointments. Uh, so, um, for the subcommittees, I have Diana Geissley as the Public Safety Chair, and Mike Payne will be a member of the Public Safety Committee. Um, Renzi McStudis is the Personnel Chair, and I have Steve Antonio, and we're going to have Kevin Beal join us for the fun that we have on Thursday mornings.
I apologize in advance.
Okay, why not? Could be fun, or?
It'll be fun.
Okay, um, the Finance Committee, which is still in the charter, and we, we, we have an ad hoc need, is, um, me as the Chair, Curtis Looney and Mike Payne. Um, the Board of Education is Diana Geissley, I am the Chair, the Liaison of Board of Finance. Diana Geissley is Library Board of Directors, Mike Payne will be on the Planning Commission, Curtis Looney will stay on the Zoning Commission, Steve Antonio will be Board of Assessment of Appeals and Zoning Board of Appeals. Diana will do double duty as a liaison and a member of aging and disability. Kevin Beal will be on Board of Ethics, Stephen Antonio Board of Code of Appeals. Kevin Beal will be a Conservation Commission in Inland Wetlands. Curtis Looney will be moving over to the Culture, Purse and Recreation Commission. Mike Payne is four in a row. I was trying to fix that, it was bothering me. Like, oh, my team, my name.
I'm feeling the weight on my shoulders already.
Mike Payne, Economic Development League Commission, Fairland Commission, Historic District Commission and Housing Authority. You know Housing Authority's eight o'clock on a Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
He's already on his cup of coffee, by the way.
Yeah, um, Wendy's Open Space, that's in the rules. Curtis Looney is staying on the Police Commission, Kevin, Public Building Committee. Retirement Plan Subcommittee is Stephen and Curtis.
That's a tough category, isn't it?
It only goes twice a year. Kevin Beal.
No, four times a year.
Oh, Kevin Beal, Water, Climate and Control.
That's easy.
And then the entire reading is, but, um, Designer Board Steve, D E I Cancel Diana, Curtis, Junior Review Board, Diana Performing Arts Board, Kevin Sustainability, Curtis Technology Task Force, Diana Youth Services Advisory, Hometown Heroes, Kevin, you're gonna join me on the Hometown Heroes Selection Committee. Um, S B A A, I'm gonna take that one, because they get into a lot of budget discussions. Curtis is gonna take on the Simsbury Soccer Club. And I'm actually had Steve and I, um, work on that two fifty, because they need off for times. And I think him and I can trade off, and they've been talking about budgets lately, so I wanna be able to, to add some value there. So, um, that's that. Hope you're happy. That's another one. Okay, I, I do refuse myself for this one, right?
Yes.
Oh, for your position?
Yeah, I can go, I can go to that one. Okay, so, I'm gonna go.
Then I'll be back.
Can you take a little?
Yeah, okay.
Wait, don't talk about me yet.
So let's talk about Wendy's fancy.
Sorry.
Um, so, uh, the next item on our agenda is to approve the stipend for the First Electman. As everyone knows, in twenty seventeen, I believe it was twenty seventeen, uh, we allocated a stipend for the First Electman in the amount of ten thousand dollars. We have not touched it since, at our first term back a couple of years ago, we discussed bringing it up at the budget. We never did bring it up back up at the budget. Um, since that time, Connecticut has substantially increased the minimum wage. Starting next year, the minimum wage for a sixteen-year-old dishwasher will be sixteen dollars and ninety-four cents. If you extrapolate the number of hours, uh, that typically Wendy McStudis has to put into this job, that extrapolates out to thirty-five thousand dollars. It's not a big number, uh, not with what we pay our professional staff. And the First Electman job is still a very labor-intensive job that takes on hours. Um, I think it's time to acknowledge that almost a decade has gone by and it, it still should be a token amount, because nobody is going to have their main income at, what I am going to propose is thirty-five thousand as a living wage. Um, but I do think ten thousand is kind of ridiculous for the amount of time a First Elect person should put into the job. She does do it extensively. Could you do it in less hours? Yes. I don't agree with her all the time, but she does do the legwork and I think she should at least get a minimum compensation. So, with that being said, um, I think I should make a motion first and then we do discussion after, if there is a second, is that correct? Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we increase the First Electman's annual stipend to an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Will someone second that?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Last to go.
So, um, uh, my, my only question about this is, um, I know we, this is something that's revisited in each new term. Um, but, you know, are, are, is this something we're looking to set a new precedent for, um, future selectmen, uh, you know, stipend amounts, as you pointed out, whether it's Wendy or any other future, uh, selectmen, um, whoever they may be elected from whatever party, they put in that work and it's, you know, and are we looking to set something that is more appropriate, uh, for the First Select Person, um, i- i- serving in that chair, in that position?
So, I think, uh, just to respond to that, I, I think we, we, we look at it every two years.
Right, right.
So I don't think we need to tie it like the connecting minimum wage is tied.
Correct.
I don't think we need to do that, because we're gonna do it in two years, but I left out of my proposal, if I could just put it in as open discussion. We can discuss whether it's a modification that would be approved. I would also not say this would take effect until July first, so it could also be included in our budget. Because we do not have more money in this twenty-five, twenty-six budget. This would be proposed for the twenty-six slash twenty-seven budget that I'm talking about, not immediate or retro happen. So with that, Curtis, I think you.
Yeah, um, I, I don't think I could do that, thirty-five thousand. Um, I think, I think, I agree with you, the role requires a lot of work. Um, I definitely wanna be First, First with the Select Person. Um, but I don't think that, I think thirty-five thousand is, is quite a bit of a jump. Um, but I also think, is there any, I did, I don't know, that's because I haven't seen it. Is there any accounting on where the money goes to, to, of the ten thousand dollars? Is it just, you have ten thousand dollars, you don't have to provide any, any receipts for anything?
No, no.
It's just a stipend.
It's a stipend, it's also pre-caps.
I- is there, um,
It's not even that.
But is there some language in the thought, I had, um, read or, or heard, maybe Wendy mentioned that the stipend amount is to, and I just wanna make sure we're, uh, covering it if their language exists, um, that the stipend amount was to cover undue expenses that the First Electman may incur in the job as, uh, as they're doing the job, whether it's, um, you know, like the copying, uh, amounts or paper or whatever expenses that they may incur, the stipend is supposed to cover any expenses that the, the First Electman incurs in the, in the order of business and the duty of, of their elected official. that the, the first selectman incurs in the, in the order of business and the duty of, of their elected official.
Now, the first selectman actually has the ability, and Tom, you're gonna correct me, to seek reimbursement for some of that stuff.
Right.
Yeah, but Diana's point was a part of the charter discussion in twenty sixteen before, during the switch, it was to cover. And they discussed for that reason, they put in specific writing to the charter for that.
Okay, so I just want, because I know there was language, and I just want to make sure that whatever we vote on here, we're not, um, in violation of language that exists of what the stipend amount is supposed to be, um, the purpose of the stipend for the first selectman, not withstanding the job that they do, and I agree with you. I just want to make sure we're covering and not violating any language that exists.
It's not actual language in the charter, that language isn't, you're covering that one. The discussions that happened in the charter, setting revision process were, were which you covered.
And is there, I guess, a positive, you want to increase it by that much? Um, is there any for future boards, any minimum requirements that you have to, you know, if you, if you don't attend meetings, and you could vote it out, I guess, but, but just, it's a decent amount of money to, to just say.
Well, I mean, how much today's day and age.
It's, it's still a decent amount of money, um, because it's not, it's not a full-time position.
It, it, it is more seasonal, but there are weeks that it's more than forty hours, and most assuredly, there are weeks that's less than ten. You know, it, it's more a, um, a negligible, as far as, it's an unstructured schedule during the budget, um, time. It's obviously very labor-intensive, to be frank, the setup for this whole, uh, meeting from the pomp and circumstances before, that's all her. She had to decide who won, and, you know, we're, we're all gonna disagree at different points and different things. I'm not saying she gets it right a hundred percent of the time, but she does her due diligence, she talks to the town manager, she talks to town council, she correlates things, she goes to an extensive amount of meetings, and to, as far as the precedent, I, it's twenty-four months, I don't think there's a precedent beyond the twenty-four months. I think every board of selectmen should decide what they feel is appropriate for the next twenty-four months. There's no precedent at all that, well, there's a precedent because it's in the past, um, but there's no precedent going forward to raise it or lower commensurate. But the town, the state rather of Connecticut, being an employer, they are all about living wage, living wage, living wage. And right now, we are not paying the first selectman a living wage. So I am not, I don't think they should be enriched, I think it's relative that our town manager makes, sorry to even say it, but our town manager makes two hundred thousand dollars, when I talk about room to, to wiggle there, there's room to wiggle. The ten thousand dollar guy is not, to me, much room to wiggle, it's, and we'll see where we go with charter revision, but it's our chief elected official, and we want someone to take it seriously. So, I, I think it just, it, it does fit into it, um, Mike, or, go ahead.
Here is my perspective, um, I did not realize that there has been no, uh, increase in the stipend. Uh, we did have extended conversations about pay versus stipend, and the stipend was specifically selected because of the flexibility that that term gave versus being directly on the table. Do I, I think ten thousand dollars is too low, I think thirty-five thousand is too big an increase.
Okay.
Um, I think we should look at it annually, I don't see this as a two-year pay, pay term.
I think it, it should almost coincide with the budget, too, because that's where the money's at.
And I agree with your point that it should coincide.
So, it's, it's awkward because we've got a budget coming up, and that's where our only solid budget during this term. After that, our next budget actually goes into the following selec, select people's term, if that's the word, um, select persons.
We have, this one that we're doing.
Twenty-five, twenty-six is now, and July is twenty-six, twenty-seven.
But we'll be voting when the budget for twenty-seven has this board.
Right, correct, you do that two days.
Which then tails over to.
So I do think it should be part of the budget negotiations.
Yes.
But as I understand it, we need to discuss it now to have a part of the budget. Because they're always going to, unless you're doing zero-based budgeting, which is not to say precluded, but I believe the library is what Mark's proposing, everything else is sort of like what you did last year, and then we negotiate whether we go down or up, because we truly do go both directions. Um, I think that sort of takes into account what you're saying, that we can either lower it or raise it in subsequent budgets. But just to reiterate, what I'm talking about is the approaching budget, not the existing budget.
Yeah, and I would be.
What do you think, sir?
I think fair for next July, uh, which would be the budget we're going to be working on, is going to a minimum of fifteen. I, I really, I understand your point about the, the living wage and everything else, but my initial looking at, uh, where we're gonna be going at with our budget this year, it's gonna be more.
Oh, is that right, yes.
I think we're gonna be faced with a lot of decisions, our have-tos, like-to, and want-to. And I think we're gonna have a lot more have-tos than, than, than else. Um, so I'm, I'm willing to, to, to go to fifteen, and welcome to here for my two minutes of thought.
Kevin, you're out of mine now, what do you got to say?
I, I do think a two-hundred-and-fifty percent increase is a lot. Even though this is a, a lar, the largest line item that we have, I, I do think that's important for us to, to think about and consider what precedent that means and what we're also gonna ask of others. You, you mentioned, um, you know, the town manager and, uh, comparison to the first selectman. I, I think it's a really tough comparison, but I think it's a good thing that we have competent, qualified staff, um, uh, for instance, in our finance department, that probably saves us millions of dollars, uh, year over year. Um, and, uh, if we were to talk about how we could appropriately compensate staff, those are some places that we should probably look. Um, I appreciate Wendy's, uh, contributions, um, here on the board, um, understanding about what people in town, uh, want and need. Um, and I also, um, appreciate that this is barely a token, um, way of, uh, showing, um, and compensating for that, for that time. And I think it gives just a little bit of extra incentive, um, as an appreciation for the extra work that goes in it. But I don't think that, as opposed to somebody's salary position that they apply for, anybody goes into this because they're gonna get a stack under the mic. It's maybe just a, 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 an extra given, um, maybe the case for, um, you know, trick somewhere, or I don't know what it is. Um, I also think that it's absolutely appropriate that, uh, members and volunteers, if they have direct costs that are associated with the performance as a member of a board, that they have the ability to seek, um, reimbursement for those direct costs. Um, so if it's printing, if it's looking at budgets and you need two copies of the budgets and that's expensive, you know, the town should be able to make sure, uh, that we're providing, you know, elected leaders just like staff, uh, with the resources that they need in order to be successful. And so if that's a necessity, I think that's a separate, uh, conversation. But the stipend was set up with the intent that we would provide, uh, some, uh, some remuneration, some compensation, uh, for a volunteer that's taking on a lion's share of, of the work to manage, um, uh, the policy setting board for, for the town. Um, I'd be willing to discuss, you know, what that means, just like last time now during the budget season. Um, I'll also mention, because I think that it's fair to say, and I don't, uh, say this, uh, either against you, Steven, or, or against Wendy at all, um, but this did not come up, uh, over the last several months either. Um, you know, while we were discussing what the appropriateness and what we were gonna be, at the office of first selectman, it just, it just doesn't come up to the public, and I feel like if that was something that was gonna be a substantive change, which I would say two-hundred-and-fifty percent is a substantive change, um, then I feel like it, it, it should have appropriately came up when we talked about all these different things that we know we gotta invest in, you know, in the town. Um, and the fact that it didn't, I think lends to the fact that it's probably not a popular, um, uh, thing to talk about. I'm willing to do the unpopular thing when it's required, I'm just not so sure that this is the one, um, hill that this board needs to die on. And I think that there's lots of ways that we can show, um, you know, appreciation for, um, our elected officials, including the first selectman, uh, beyond just a dollar amount on a, on a check, um, you know, once a month. So, I'm, um, I, I would be happy to, um, approve the stipend in the current budgeted amount, and then reconsider it, um, you know, during budget time, and then whenever necessary for us, um, to do that, if we agree to it, and when we have all the competing priorities in front of us, and we can make that decision, you know, as, as a whole. I just, tonight, I don't feel like I was prepared to increase it by, by that amount, it's all for me.
Curtis, which fifteen thousand, you're probably, you went seven thirty-five, it's too high as well.
Yeah, I think it is too high, um, I mean, you did bring up the fact that hasn't changed since twenty-seventeen. Um, the, the one thing where I find it to be maybe a slippery slope is, is if, uh, if you were to go so high, would you then start comparing the, the finance director, the, um, the head of the finance department, um, Lisa? The amount of time that she looks at, are gonna equate everyone who's the head of something, they all be paid, you know, wide support of selectmen, um, first selectmen, such a large amount. And I think at, at the ten, fifteen thousand range, it's more acceptable to say that this is more just, um, I know you're saying thirty-five is not on the mic, but some people it is, so, um, uh, to you, that's with you, I, I think I could go with fifteen.
Diana, what are you texting?
I'm doing, I'm, I'm actually, like, I'll get later, like, I did the lecture, and I'm doing.
No problem.
I'm doing, I'm doing finances, I was looking at like three percent year-over-year, uh, what that would be if we had given her a three percent, or given the first selectman a few percent raise year-over-year since two thousand seventeen, and what that would calculate out to at this time, is what I was doing, um, which comes up to close to fifteen thousand.
Would that be palatable to you?
It would be palatable to me, um, yes, and I would like to re, I would like to have it, um, noted and to revisit, uh, during the budget time, so that we can look at it in each budget cycle, not just a passover of, yeah, we already approved that, because, to everyone's point, you know, as we look at, you know, the last several years, we, we, you know, we saved on salt, you know, during, oh, it worked, and we were thrilled, you know, that, you know, we shaved off five thousand dollars here, we shaved off ten thousand dollars here, um, you know, tried to save as much money as we possibly could. I do agree that it is, it, we want to be fair to the person doing the job, um, I just think that large increase would cause, was, would brought up too many feathers, letting me have a tough budget. So I, I think fifteen thousand dollars is, um, a, a fair ra, a fair increase at this time.
It's a large increase percentage-wise.
Percentage-wise.
Often weirdly.
And, uh, you know, with the caveat that we, we have the ability to relook at it, uh, during each budget cycle.
We all do.
Yes, but we, but we decided, had it as a passover, so.
So, with the fifteen thousand dollars being discussed and put forward, uh, I'd like to take a vote with the.
You can do it.
What? With the, yeah, that's what I was saying, uh, with the amendment that the annual stipend be adjusted to fifteen thousand dollars.
Starting, starting.
July first, twenty twenty-six.
So it'll remain at ten thousand, you know, adjusted monthly, I remember, until June thirty, and then for that first payment, starting at July, after we've already approved the budget, I can, I can do it.
So.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, if anyone wants, does someone want to tell Wendy?
Oh, yes.
Where are you wanting to go yet?
I don't know, we should.
And so, you know, you don't get it.
Even though it's an annualized amount.
It will be there.
But how do you know it's too much?
Did I get a forty thousand dollar raise?
Yeah.
Not quite, but you did get a fifty percent raise.
What?
Yeah, well, yeah. Because you made us, I might add, too.
I guess I'll take you to lunch, unless that's bribery.
No, I, I don't think we should do that, however, go ahead and, uh, continue on with the next thing.
Did you do a good job, so I'm doing it in Jada, you're gonna be the, yeah, okay. Um, reappoint town council. So, we have, last year, we did a R F E for, um, for Ordin Harrison, right? And we have Updike Kelly and Spelacy, uh, for two-year term, and Pullman Conley for the bond council. Um, the one thing, if, if anybody's interested in doing any RFPs, um, I, I was, we, we did this for due diligence ask them the last time we did one for, um, for, for Bob was, and I don't know, Tom, did you get any answer on that?
Don't, we just haven't been having, because, uh, the council's.
And, and so, you know, I.
Since when?
One sixty.
Nineteen ninety-eight?
That's how long Bob, Bob has been, that firm has been council.
Yeah, so we, we did, at, at Jada, we talked about bringing up potentially doing an RFP. One of the, one of the concerns is, he's our charter provision guy, um, he's also, I guess, working with Mark, with the uniforms request that we did, um, so, so that's that, and, and he is willing to continue to serve for, for two, for the term. So I'm just putting that out there, if anybody has any.
I think it's well enough to bring up that he is not increasing his repayment.
Yeah, that's true, and he is the known, he is really one of the, make, most knowledgeable in Hometown. So is everybody okay with re, re-upping everybody, any, any concerns with, uh?
I think during our charter revision, we really can't jump ship anyways, so I'm not saying that should be the sole reason, but that's the pros and the cons for me.
Okay, well, I'm gonna read the motions, all right, I don't have anything, um, somebody else wanna read them? I'll call the vote, but we can read them, we can make the motions if they.
Um, move effective December first, two thousand twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five to reappoint the firm of Ford Harrison L L P as Labor and Equipment Council, and as Pension Council for the Town of Simsbury for a two-year term through December sixth, two thousand twenty-seven. Move effective December first, two thousand twenty-five to reappoint the firm of Pullman and Conley L L P as ba, bond council for the Town of Simsbury for a two-year term through December sixth, twenty twenty-seven.
And the town.
On the first, uh.
Oh, the move effective December first, twenty twenty-five to reappoint the firm of Updike Kelly and, uh, Spelacy P C as town attorney for the two-year term through December sixth, two thousand twenty-seven, pursuant to the Town of Simsbury Charter, section seven oh six, and for acting town manager Tom Fitzgerald to execute the engagement letter.
Would somebody like to second that?
Oh, second.
She sounds so excited.
Oh, I'll second.
Oh, is there any, any, any discussion? All, all those in favor say aye. I agree about any of this one, okay. All right, so, really, the only item that I wanted to just, you know, bring up, um, that I, I was not planning to reauthorize the Business Development Committee, um, first of all, I didn't assign anybody to it. The reason, um, I did not bring it up, I'm just, we don't have to do anything if we don't vote, um, I don't think, right? Do I have to vote, do we have to vote, or do we just pretend we don't re-up it? Like, does it require?
So, so the long-term will just kind of continue over until you, your co-termliness with your board, so.
So we have to end it if you want to end it, okay, I was just thinking if we didn't re-up that. So, just, just so everybody knows, part of it, it's built into this fee waiver and tax abatement program, and that is something that we were planning to look at as part of the policy review, and also is brought up in the housing policy, so it is something that we plan to review, um, and what I was told is if we end up doing any thing that needs something, we could pull together an ad hoc committee, so I'm, I'm gonna vote, um, I'm gonna, yeah, make the motion effective December for twenty twenty-five to not reauthorize the Business Development Committee with members' terms being co-termed with the board's one. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's gone. Um, uh, okay, so now, just, I think we're at our minutes, right? Okay, um, so I'd like to ask, uh, make, ask for a motion, um, to approve the minutes for November seventh, twenty twenty-five special meeting. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
I understand.
I'd ask you to then, okay, um, is there, uh, uh, the same thing, a motion for the, November tenth, uh, regular meeting? Kind of a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, you'd like to add one?
I understand.
Okay, good.
On the, yeah, go ahead.
Is there a motion to adjourn? So, second, oh, uh, Mike, Mike, okay.
I was like, if he was gonna abstain.
All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together, we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.